I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. Hinshaw.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here.
Mr. LaFever.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mrs. Burke.
Here. Please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. We'll begin tonight's meeting with recognitions. Dr. Cates.
I'd like to warmly welcome everyone into our board meeting this evening. We are very pleased to honor and celebrate the successes of some fine young people, certainly the parents and coaches as well. I'd like to introduce Eric Minkowski, our Director of Athletics and Activities, to begin tonight's presentation.
Board of Education, Dr. Cates, thank you for taking some time to honor some really talented students. I think, as you can see, we've got a full room, as it took us a little while to get this meeting started, which is great. Helping me present tonight, our Palatine High School Principal Gary Steiger, Fremd High School Principal Kurt Teniper, and Assistant Principal Kim Glazer, Conan High School Principal Julie Novak, and Assistant Principal Mark Langer, and Hoffman Estates High School Principal Josh Shoemaker, and Assistant Principal Brian Harland. Students, I'll ask that after your sponsor gets up here and they introduce you, to please walk up here, grab your medal, and stand here next to the podium, and then when your group is finished, we'll get ourselves right back in line. So, got a lot of people here, so we'll get started. Carl Garrison, we'll start with Palatine High School Science Olympiad. Carl Garrison has been the District 211 for eighteen years. He spent the last ten years as the Science Department Chair at Palatine High School, and he's been coaching their Science Olympiad team for the last nine years. Carl.
Good evening, and I'm just thrilled to be here again with the Palatine High School Science Olympiad team. I'm glad we're making this a yearly tradition. I also want to congratulate the Conan High School Science Olympiad team on their performance at the state tournament. Congratulations. Hopefully, we'll see each other here again next year. So joining me is another Science Olympiad coach from Palatine High School, Patrick Rowan, from the Science Department. So all of us want to thank the Board of Education for providing our students the opportunity to participate in these activities. Our Superintendent, Dr. Dan Cates, our Principal Gary Steiger, our Assistant Principal Mike Alther, and all of the other people in our Science Department for their continued support of our students. And also, all of the coaches want to thank all the parents. Thank you so much for providing us these wonderful students to work with. We really enjoy working with your students, so thank you. So, Science Olympiad is a team competition in which fifteen students perform or work in pairs or threes to take care of twenty-three different events. So it's a team event, and the whole team has to work together to get to state. So to get to state, you have to finish high enough at a regional tournament. And, so we competed in our seventh consecutive tournament at the state tournament, and we finished nineteen out of forty-nine teams. We won medals in four events, including a second in Experimental Design, a third in Write It Do It, a fifth in Helicopters, and a fifth in E-Write Stuff. So the events in which Palatine High School students earn the medals include Experimental Design, where students are given materials and they have to perform an experiment right on the spot. No previous preparation. They are then required to create a lab write-up, which is what's graded for the tournament. And then Write It Do It. One student has to write a description of how an object is constructed or put together, and then the other student in a different room, without having seen the original object, has to follow the instructions that are written with just the loose pieces and put the object together. Helicopters, students have to construct a rubber band powered helicopter that will fly as long as possible. And in E-Write Stuff, teams will construct and test an electric motor powered airplane with a single propeller to fly as long as possible. And the power comes from a capacitor. So at this time, I would like to present to you four, or five, of the students. Our other students aren't here tonight, sorry about that. So let's see. So accompanied by his parents, Lauren and David Wilmings, earning a third place in Write It Do It, I present Senior Elliot Wilmings. So Elliot will attend the Harper U of I Engineering Pathways Program next year. Accompanied by his parents, Kerry and Troy McLennan, earning a fifth place in Helicopters, we have Junior Curtis McLennan. Accompanied by his parent, Jennifer Salloway, earning a fifth place in Helicopters, I present four-year team member, Senior Josh Salloway. And Josh will be attending Northern Illinois University next year. Accompanied by her parent, Jeff Service, earning a fifth place in E-Write Stuff, we have sophomore Jocelyn Service. Accompanied by her parent, Carol Schiller, earning a fifth place in E-Write Stuff, I present sophomore Nicole Schiller. So on behalf of the Palatine High School Science Olympiad team, the students, the coaches, and all of our supporters, we thank the Board of Education, Dr. Cates, for recognizing us tonight. We appreciate the support, the encouragement, and we look forward to earning the right to be invited back here next year. So thank you.
All right. Tracy Gala has been a chemistry teacher at Conan High School for the past seventeen years, and for the last seven, she has been coaching Conan's High School Science Olympiad team. Tracy?
Thank you all for being here tonight and allowing us to participate in this ceremony. Thank you for taking the time to recognize our Conan High School Science Olympiad state medal winners. I have had the pleasure of coaching this team since its beginning, and we have grown tremendously from a group of about seven or eight kids to over sixty kids participating at our school in Science Olympiad. And it's just an honor to recognize these fine young people tonight for their achievements in Science Olympiad. Before I call up our students, I'd like to thank Carl Garrison and the Palatine High School team for their support of Conan High School. We are banded together as the only two Science Olympiad teams here in 211, and hopefully we can grow into more of the schools. So here we go. Junior Jareth Gomez, here with his father, Ivan Gomez, earned second place in Mousetrap Vehicle and third place in Hovercraft. Senior Aman Patel, here with his father Rajesh Patel, earned second place in Mousetrap Vehicle. Senior Joseph Lee, here with his parents, John Lee and Son Park, earned third place in Hovercraft. Senior Shiv Patel, here with his parents, Kamini and Girish Patel, earned fourth place in Detector Building and fourth place in Wi-Fi Lab. Junior Sid Mahrotra, here with his mother Swati Mahrotra, earned fourth place in Wi-Fi Lab. And sophomore Krish Metta, here with his brother Shilmetta, earned fourth place in Detector Building. So congratulations to you guys, and thank you also to Principal Novak and Assistant Principal Mark Langer for all of their support of our team as well. Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to journalism. Amanda Gannis has been teaching social studies at Fremd High School for the last thirteen years, and in addition to teaching social studies, she's also been the head yearbook sponsor for the last six years. Thank you, Amanda.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I just want to say a quick thank you for allowing us to recognize these talented and devoted students. Eighty-seven schools across the state compete at the IHSA Journalism Sectional with the hopes to place in the top three and advance the state. During the state series, students compete in each element that it takes to construct a newspaper or yearbook. From designing the layout, taking the photos, caption writing, and storytelling, these students do it all. The state journalism competition is one of the most nerve-wracking experiences for both advisors and student journalists, but we are extremely proud of the poise and hard work that our students displayed. We'd now like to recognize the state place winners. Parents, please stand as your child is recognized. It is my honor to present, from Fremd High School, Priyo Desai. Priyo is joined tonight by her parents, Nick and Tajil. Priyo won first place at sectionals and fourth place at state in the yearbook layout double-page spread category. Not only did Priyo need to learn a new software program for the state series, but she also had to implement what she had learned just weeks prior. In order to achieve her success, Priyo needed to use her creative thinking, spatial reasoning, and software knowledge to present aesthetically pleasing and functional design for the judges. We could not be more proud of Priyo for her accomplishments and will greatly miss her next year, as she plans to attend St. Louis University and study biology. Congratulations, Priyo.
Okay, we'll move on to Conan High School. David Guzdala. David is in his thirteenth year of teaching AP English at Conan High School, and is in the eleventh year of advising the school newspaper, The Conan Cryer, and the school literary magazine, Tapestry. David.
Dr. Cates, and the board, thank you very much for having us here and for honoring us tonight. I'm here with her dad, David Lafayette, this is Annika Lafayette. Annika placed sixth. Annika placed sixth in editorial writing in the IHSA State Journalism Competition, and was one of just thirteen students in the state to be named to the 2018 Illinois Journalism Education All-State Journalism Team. Annika's been a member of the Conan Cryer staff throughout her four years of high school and has been pivotal in sustaining the success of our program after we became an online-only operation in 2014. It would be hard to exaggerate how much Annika has meant to what we do. Just this year, in addition to being a co-editor-in-chief and leading a staff of more than twenty-five of her peers, she has written for the Entertainment, Opinions, Features, and News sections, and has covered topics such as student protests, vaping, and girls who code. She also wrote a powerful editorial about how students could contribute to a safer school community following the tragic school shootings in Parkland, Florida. She's led our team with maturity, professionalism, and insight, and understands just how important journalism is to a healthy, vibrant society. She is truly irreplaceable, but our staff will benefit from her inspired leadership long after she is gone. Annika will be attending Cornell University in the fall, and I know her contributions there will be equally as meaningful. Thank you for everything, Annika. And while co-editor-in-chief Tavani Raval could not be here tonight because she's attending her brother's eighth grade graduation at MEED, she deserves recognition for placing sixth in state for copy editing. Tavani has led our newspaper as editor-in-chief for the past two years, placed on the All-State Journalism Team last year, and has been an integral part of our newspaper's success. So I wanted to recognize her.
All right. Suzanne Featherling is an AP Biology teacher at Hoffman Estates High School. In addition to being the Worldwide Youth in Science and Engineering, or WISE, sponsor for six years, she's also a Flags Assistant Coach and the Head Freshman Softball Coach.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the school board for having us here this evening to recognize one of the district's finest students, Mr. Adam Myers, a recent graduate of Hoffman Estates. I would also like to thank the HEHS administration, particularly Mr. Shoemaker, our principal, and Mr. Harland, our activity director, for all the tremendous effort that they always put in to recognize the success of our students. Adam's mother, Mrs. Myers, could not make it this evening, but I would still like to recognize her for raising such an amazing son. Tonight, we are here to celebrate the accomplishments Adam has made this year through his involvement with WISE. Adam competed both in Biology and in Engineering Graphics, and excelled at all levels. In the regional competition at Naperville North High School, he placed first and outscored his competition by an extensive margin. He placed second at the sectional competition at North Central College, and he placed first at the state competition at the University of Illinois in Urbana-Champaign. And they are actually also, he will forever be the state champion because this is the last year U of I is running WISE. So you're going down in the history books. Maybe we'll join Science Olympiad. We'll see. Adam was a student in my AP Biology class and one of my student interns. He is brilliant. Other students were struggling with abstract concepts, and he would quietly in class work on organic chemistry problems until the other students were ready to discuss the problems at hand. Despite his intellectual talents, Adam's relaxed outlook on school is refreshing, and he approaches science with an enthusiasm I have seen in few students. He has an eccentric personality that can take you off guard, but he's got a deadpan sense of humor that I find absolutely hilarious. In addition to WISE and making fashion statements with his MEED Junior High Phys Ed t-shirt on a consistent basis, Adam competed on the math team, he was a swimmer, and he played tennis. He will be attending the University of Wisconsin-Madison in the fall, majoring in molecular biology. Adam, we are so proud of all of your accomplishments, and we are so happy to have you part of our Hawk family. Congrats.
Okay, now on to the first of three math teams. We'll start with Palatine. Craig Barnes has been in the district for twenty-four years, eleven at Hoffman Estates and the last thirteen at Palatine High School. Craig serves as the Math Department Chair at Palatine High School and has been the Palatine Math Team Head Coach for the last eleven years. Craig.
I want to thank the board for having us here again tonight to recognize a very strong math team performance at the state meet this year at the University of Illinois. District 11 was very well represented as you're here tonight. It was almost like we were at the District 21 conference meet, hearing all the awards we were wearing. So, the math team state meet is a series of twelve different events, a mix of written, team, and oral presentation events, where teams compete silently and verbally, and you'll hear many different stories of the awards we're here tonight. I'm here to recognize the junior/senior relay team of Aaron Kleinschmidt, Dominic DeFiesta, Avi Saxina, and Bargav Yadavalli. And I want to sincerely thank their parents, Celeste DeFiesta, Rengoli, and Alec Saxina, and Lakshmi Yadavalli, for raising such wonderful people. So come up here, guys. This team of four earned third place in the state competition as members of the junior/senior relay team. This contest is extremely challenging, as all four contestants sit in a row behind each other, and each get a difficult problem to work on that requires the answer from the person sitting in front of them. Remember, they can't talk. They begin to solve the problem on their own using generic variables, and then waits for the previous teammate to pass back their answer. The answer is then used to solve their question, and then the new answer is passed back to the person behind them. This continues until all four contestants have solved all four problems. There's also no communication allowed, a time limit, and a bonus for solving all four questions at three minutes or five minutes. This team was able to solve all three rounds correctly and received the highest bonus for two of the three rounds, and the second highest bonus for one round. Absolutely amazing. Dominic is a junior who has also been on math team all three years, and was part of the second-place state COCO team last year, and wants to win even more next year. Avi has been on math team all four years, helped organize Code D-211, and seen all his hard work and dedication pay off this year. He will be attending University of Illinois, majoring in Computer Engineering. Bargav has been on math team all four years, and also helped organize Code D-211, and has also seen all his hard work and dedication pay off this year in his achievements. He will also be attending University of Illinois, majoring in Computer Science. Congratulations, Pirates. You've earned it.
Chris Grittoni is a nationally board-certified math and computer science teacher from Fremd High School. He has been coaching the math team since 2007, has been the head coach since 2012. And Chris is also a proud District 211 graduate, having graduated from Fremd High School.
It is my pleasure to introduce the members of the Fremd High School math team who earned medals at the ICTM State Competition on May 5th. I would like to start by first thanking Frem's administration, the D-211 leadership, and the Board of Education for their unwavering support of our program, as well as the parents of our students, who helped them become the amazing young people they are today. Parents, thank you. Please stand so we can recognize you. Our math team earned fifth place as a team this year, the highest place in Frem's history. Our entire team practiced tirelessly for five months to achieve this level of success. This group of students consistently impresses me with their superb level of teamwork, their communication skills, and their mathematical ability. Tonight, I will be introducing the students who earned fourth place or higher on their competitions. The first group of students I have the honor to recognize are the members of the sophomore Geometry Written Team. With a score of 126 points, the Geometry Team earned third place in the state. Arnav Agarwal. Alice Chen. Eileen Peng. Kinlin Peng. Sean Randun. Nipun Velupali. Next, it is my pleasure to recognize the members of the Junior Algebra II Written Team. With a score of 140 points, the Algebra II Team earned second place in the state. They were only four points away from first place. Hannah Chen. Christina Chen. Megan Jong. Kevin Lee. Finally, I would like to introduce the members of the Junior/Senior Relay Team. Two of our juniors were also on written. Anthony Mu, who was also a member of the Junior Algebra II Team. Flora Zhang, who was a member of the Junior Algebra II Team and the relay team. Finally, Edward Lee. Ed is a senior who will be attending the University of Chicago in the fall, majoring in math and economics. Congratulations to all of you, and on behalf of the entire math team, I'd like to thank you for your tireless hard work and dedication. You have truly upheld Frem's tradition of excellence.
Rich Cortez has been a math and computer science teacher at Conan High School for the last twenty-four years. Rich has also been the head math team coach for the last thirteen years. Rich?
Thank you. I'd like to start actually by recognizing my administrator in charge of activities, Mark Langer. They don't often get the credit they deserve, and he has shown a commitment to activities that I have not seen at Conan in the twenty-four years I've been there. So thank you, Mark. I do appreciate it. I have the, I have the pleasure to introduce Rajah Matal. Come on over. Company devised mom, Shalini. Rajah has shown a passion and commitment to being a mathlete, and we use that term on purpose, a mathlete, that I have never seen in all the years that I have done math team or in a math department. He is absolutely amazing at what he does, but it's not the ability at math, it's the ability to make our team better. Some of the things that he's done for us this year, he started an honors math team within our math group that is specifically looking to compete at the American Math Competition and make that whole group better. He runs a nonprofit math group called the Midwest Math Circle, dedicated to teaching kids third through ninth grade math at the level that he is at, and he wants to bring those kids into District 21. It's showing that commitment. He has made our entire team better just by being there. The kids do not say no to him at all. He asks them to come to practice, an extra practice, four extra practices, and they do it because Rajah is there, and he's shown that commitment. Just a few, a list of, a very short list of what he's done, this is not encompassing. Just this year, in conference, eight out of the ten meets, he's had perfect papers, eight out of ten, and most kids hope to get one in their whole four-year career. Total cumulative for the entire fifty-nine school conference, he was third in juniors for all fifty-nine schools. The All-Conference Award obviously went to him. He was first place at regionals, and he was first place at state. So thank you very much, Rajah, for making me a better math player.
All right. Next, we'll bring up Bob Hanson. Bob Hanson is a special education and P teacher at Fremd High School, who's just completed his nineteenth year as the head badminton coach. During his tenure, Fremd has captured eighteen straight sectional championships and seven IHSA trophies, including two state championships. Bob is also a proud District 211 graduate and a graduate of Palatine High School. Bob.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank all the Frem staff and administration for the badminton support. I'd like to especially thank Dr. Cates for coming to the MSL Badminton Meet, and so on behalf of my girls, they wanted to give you one of our state medals. Before I start with the names, I just want to thank my players. They're outstanding young ladies that are fantastic. Have you seen with our track record on the court, but also all their involvement in everything else they do, their successes off the court, in the classroom, musically, math team, HOSA. I mean, we missed a lot of practices, I'm going to be honest. If I didn't allow to miss practice, I'd have a team of two, I think. Ladies, thank you, and it's much appreciated. I'd also like to have all the badminton parents, please stand. I know I really appreciate, and I know the girls really appreciate, when we go down to Charleston, Illinois, that you guys are down there with us, cheering us on, and taking good care of us. So thank you for your support and the effort that you give as strong parents for my team. So thank you. Okay, introductions here. We have Jasmine Carroll. Her partner, Sharon Wu. This is going to be her second time up here. Doubles partners, Hannah Chen and Jenny Lee, fourth-place finishers in state. We also have Jane Kim. Kate Bodenstein. Shreya Prasad. Shravya Chana Molu. And we also have Kelly Liu. Kelly finished fifth this year, fourth last year, and she is also Frem's number-one golfer. So we love seeing two sports at Frem High School. And last, our super freshman here, Rachel Ye. Rachel finished fourth at state, and she's going to be representing the United States in the Pan Am Games in Brazil, playing doubles. So good luck to her. Thank you very much.
Each year, the Illinois High School Gymnastics Coaches Association honors a senior student athlete as the state's Senior Gymnast of the Year. I am proud to announce that the coaches got it right and made another WISE selection this year. This year's Coaches Association Senior Honoree is from Palatine High School, and he's with us this evening. Gymnastics coach Scott Hegel will introduce him in just a moment. This is our second consecutive Senior Gymnast Honoree from Palatine High School, as well as our third consecutive from District 211. On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to congratulate our Senior Gymnast on this outstanding honor. Board President, Mrs. Burke, will present him with his certificate following his introduction. Scott.
I'd like to begin by thanking the board and all of our district administrators for allowing us to have the state meet at Hoffman Estates High School this year. You would have thought they were hosting it for the last thirty years, it was an outstanding facility, outstanding meet, so thank you very much for that. I'd like to begin by introducing Chris's parents, Hal and Betsy Lunsford. It is now my privilege to introduce Chris Lunsford. Chris just capped off a remarkable four-year varsity career by qualifying to the state finals for the second year in a row. However, it is not- However, it is not this honor, but the next honor that truly represents what Chris meant to Palatine Gymnastics. The Illinois High School Gymnastics Coaches Association named Chris the Senior Gymnast of the Year. Each year, the coaches vote to award one senior in the state of Illinois this honor based on their leadership, character, and dedication to high school gymnastics. Chris, your reputation for excellence and drive to make others better is greatly appreciated and will be missed by all that coached and taught you at Palatine High School. Congratulations on all your success so far, and I know this is just the beginning of all the great things you will accomplish.
There are many qualities that are characteristic of a great coach. Communication, education, organization, commitment, and dedication, concern, and compassion, and the ability to push student athletes to their limits while supporting them at the same time. These qualities are clearly recognizable among the coaches who stand out, and this evening, I'm pleased to recognize two of District 211's best examples, one for his outstanding achievement and the other for Hall of Fame honors. First, I'd like to congratulate Fremd High School Badminton Coach Robert Hanson on being named the 2017 Illinois High School Association Badminton Coach of the Year. Bob, please approach the podium and... Bob's been coaching badminton at Fremd High School for 18 years, leaving his indelible coaching mark on the school's program. During his coaching tenure, Bob's badminton teams are combined 120-0 versus MSL opponents during regular season games and have won nine Mid-Suburban League Championships. His teams have never lost in sectionals, winning 18 consecutive sectional championships. The Vikings have then gone on to earn seven total state trophies, including two state badminton championships. Bob's 2017 Viking team finished the regular season with a 13-0 dual-meet record and followed that with their 17th straight conference and sectional tournament championships. The team finished third in the state in that year, taking home the school's sixth state badminton trophy in the past 10 years, and as we just heard earlier this evening, the team this year repeated their third-place finish. On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to congratulate you, Bob, on being recognized as the Illinois High School Association's 2017 Badminton Coach of the Year. This is certainly a well-deserved honor. Please come forward to accept your certificate from Board President, Mrs. Burke. We have another exceptional coach to be honored this evening. I'd like to ask Scott Hegel from Palatine High School to come to the podium to be recognized. Scott was recently inducted into the Illinois High School Gymnastics Coaches Association Hall of Fame. The Palatine High School Boys Gymnastics Program has been under Scott's direction for the past 18 years, where his teams are seven-time Mid-Suburban League Champions, including 10 MSL West Division titles. His teams have been sectional champions seven times while making seven Elite Eight appearances and rode to being crowned state champions in 2007 and a third-place finish in 2008. His team also finished fifth at the state meet three times, as well as recording fourth-place and sixth-place finishes. Scott has been recognized 12 times as the MSL Coach of the Year, while also being named the State Coach of the Year twice, in 2007 and again in 2017. He has coached three Senior Gymnasts of the Year, including Christian Lunsford this year, whom we recognized just a moment ago. Scott has been a major contributor to the Illinois High School Gymnastics, first as a gymnast in high school, and then as a coach and a state-level official. He has served as president of the Illinois High School Gymnastics Coaches Association, as well as also serving as an IHSA State Finals Judge and two-time member of the IHSA Advisory Board. On behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations on your induction into the Illinois High School Gymnastics Coaches Association Hall of Fame. We are appreciative of your time and dedication to the student athletes and parents of the Palatine High School community, as well as your fine representation of Palatine High School and District 211 in so many ways. Please come forward to accept a certificate from Board President, Mrs. Burke. This time, I'd like to ask Dr. Lisa Small to go to the podium to honor some very important members of our community who have helped us in our business incubator program.
Thank you, Dr. Cates. The business incubator program is in its third year at our five high schools. This year, our students developed 38 business ideas via the Lean Start Methodology. These business teams learned about the importance of testing, failing fast, and then pivoting on your assumptions as you learn more about your clients and the people who might buy your product. This unique class keeps our business teams connected to volunteers from our local community. In order for this to occur, District 211 has over 100 local business men and women connected to our students who are willing to share their time and expertise. These local business leaders work closely with our teachers and department chairs to provide this unique experiment for our students. At this time, I'd like to bring forward our teachers and department chairs who are here tonight to help me honor our volunteers. Cliff Watanuki, business incubator teacher and business department chair from Palatine High School. Ed Jonas, Fremd incubator teacher and business department chair. Tony Miller, Conan incubator teacher. Keri Largo, Hoffman Estates Business Department Chair. And Patty Erle, Conan Department Chair and District 211 Business Chair. Standing alongside of our teachers during this program are our volunteers, who are community champions, mentors, coaches, and Board of Directors. The community champions work tirelessly to keep our students networked with our experts. We could not run this course without the work of our community champions and their connections to other business people. Coaches are our experts. They are consultants with our teachers and co-teachers within our classrooms. These coaching volunteers bring the curriculum alive with real stories and experiences. These coaches commit multiple days per topic to be involved with our students. Mentors are assigned to a business team to keep them progressing and inspired. Mentors meet with students throughout the entire year, in school and out of school, to ensure a realistic approach to the business ideas and their foundation. This course would not be the same without our coaches, mentors, Board of Directors, and community champions. Finally, our Board of Directors are a group of volunteers who help make the minimum viable product decisions, as well as review of the final academic pitch, the culminating event for most of our teams. It is my pleasure to introduce to you a representative group from our business incubator volunteers who dedicate their time and willing to share their expertise with our students. From Alpha Graphics, Jeff Bitner. From Hutchison Tools, Tim Hutchinson. From Enterprise Solution Groups, Anna Schamber, community champions, Humeon Khan. From CME Mentors, Debbie Platic. From GFK, Lynn Potts. From Remax, Eric Gronwick. From Specialty Finishing Group, Jim Gallo. And we had two volunteers who might have snuck in, who were running late from another meeting. Texas RWE, Ferdy Alfaharo. And from Willment Management Associates, Thadi Babaway. On the behalf of our District 211 students, thank you so much. This course could not run without you.
I'd ask Andrea Chambers to please come forward. Tonight, we would like to recognize Sprint Telecommunications for its partnership with District 211 within the One Million Project. Sprint's One Million Project provides internet services to families across the country who otherwise would not have access to the internet. Through the One Million Project, Sprint and the Sprint Foundation works to close the homework gap by providing free home internet devices to school districts, who in turn distribute these devices to disadvantaged students who do not have home internet access. This year, District 211 partnered with Sprint to provide internet access devices and services to approximately 230 households across our district. We are grateful for this service provided to our students, and we look forward to participating in the One Million Project again in the coming school year, with the hope of increasing the number of families that can benefit from this support. You know, we have tried for several years recognizing that this was going to be an issue, and I just want to publicly acknowledge and thank Sprint for delivering a solution, and we are hopeful that that solution will continue. It is a difference-maker for many of our students. Joining us tonight from Sprint is Implementation Project Manager Andrea Chambers, who manages the One Million Project for more than 40 participating school districts in the Midwest and Pacific Northwest regions. The Township High School District 211 Board of Education would like to extend our sincere appreciation and gratitude to Sprint Telecommunications and Ms. Chambers for their continued work to provide internet service to our students and families. I'd ask you to please come forward and accept a certificate.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to congratulate all the students here this evening, as well as our community partners. We certainly appreciate it. The Board of Education will take a short recess to allow for photographs and anything else. We'll move on to citizens' appearances and presentations. Is there anyone in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign the yellow sheet that would like to address the Board of Education? Okay, just checking. We have no one signed up, so we will go ahead and move along to our presentation. Dr. Cates?
We're very pleased tonight to have a wonderful group of people who have worked very hard to create more rigor for more students. I'm going to let Dr. Small do the formal introduction.
Thank you, Dr. Cates. We are very proud of the progress that our students and faculty have made over the past two years by examining our past practices and mindsets surrounding the placement of our students within our advanced placement coursework. Our faculty has worked diligently to increase our students' confidence and outlook in terms of them being able to be successful in that rigorous course. For a student who may not have ever considered themselves high-achieving, to be able to say, "I successfully completed a college-level course before she ever leaves school," opens many opportunities and choices that that student may have never otherwise considered. It is my pleasure to introduce to you our three presenters tonight. Loriann Freary from Fremd High School, a social studies teacher; Danielle Hauser, Director of Instructional Improvement; and Brian Harland, Assistant Principal of Hoffman Estates High School. Tonight, they will share with you some of our students' stories and the progress we've made over the past few years.
We are very excited to share with you the great opportunities and student experiences that students have had over the last year as a result of our partnership with EOS. The first graph on the slide I'd like to show you indicates our growth from the 2016-17 school year to the 2017-18 school year. The blue bars indicate last year, and the green bars indicate this year's enrollment. The numbers at the top of the bar indicates the number of students, and I want to point out, the height of the bar is actually determined by the percentage of each demographic group. So, that's why you might see the bars changing heights even though the numbers are different. Particularly, though, if we could go to the second section. As you can see, each one of these sections is divided up by middle-high income and low-income. The second section there is our Hispanic-Latino population. As you can see, we went from 253 low-income Hispanic students to 370 in a year. That is 117 additional students. In the entire Hispanic student population, we grew by an additional 189 students. We are very proud of the work that this is happening and its changing lives.
We took a multifaceted approach to eliminate barriers that underrepresented students have when taking an AP course for the first time. The first step was identifying the needs of our students through the mindsets that were identified by equal-opportunity schools. Those are growth mindset, grit, focus, purpose for learning, academic identity, and community leadership. In order to support our students in these areas, we knew that we would have to go beyond just supporting our students and also provide support to our staff. Over the course of the last two years, we provided targeted professional development for all of our faculty members on growth mindset and grit. Beginning in the spring of 2017, we invited all AP teachers to take part in what we called AP Teacher Forums. These forums sought to educate our teachers on the needs of our students in the aforementioned mindsets and also collaborate with our AP teachers, but also provide a platform for them to collaborate with each other. The results from the EOS Student Support Survey were shared, and feedback was sought directly from teachers on supports AP students and teachers needed during these sessions. This also marked a unique experience in which AP teachers were able to collaborate across different AP curriculums and identify the most effective instructional practices that are relevant for an AP course. We have long known that the key to student success is student relationships with an adult at school. The classroom teachers are often the source of that key relationship. One thing we found from our EOS survey was that many students hadn't taken an AP course yet simply because they felt like they did not belong in that course. A major component of these AP teacher forums was training our teachers on how to facilitate belonging and that sense of belonging in their classroom. In addition to providing in-house professional development, we also offered AP teachers the opportunity to attend trains outside of school at specific content-related AP conferences that applied to their content area. Student support for Hoffman Estates High School students in this area started at the macro level with our SOAR program. We provided students lessons on growth mindset and grit throughout the last two years. In the spring of 2017, underrepresented students demonstrating the learning mindsets to be successful in an AP course were invited to take part in the Lunch and Learn session. During this session, students underwent belonging training and heard about why they specifically belonged in an AP course. In order to further prepare our students for challenges they face when taking an AP course for the first time, we offered a summer school course prior to this school year to prepare students for taking an AP course. In addition to providing curricular support and skill support for the increased rigor, we also provide students social-emotional support and belonging training as well. We extended the support at the start of the school year into a new program that we developed called AP Lab, which was in place of a traditional study hall for these students. In this AP Lab space, students received targeted skills instruction from instructors and continued social-emotional support as they navigated their AP courses for the first time. Students that needed additional one-on-one support were recommended for the HEHS mentoring program that connect them with an adult in the building. I had an opportunity to sit down and speak with a student named Jacqueline earlier this week, and she was one of the students that had benefited from this program. She was invited to one of the Lunch and Learn sessions last spring, and she admits when she walked in and looked at everybody else, she felt like she did not belong. And she said it was simply because she looked around in these other AP courses, where people were taking these courses, and she had never taken an honors or accelerated course before. She said she was hesitant and was not sold right away. We encouraged the students to go talk to their trusted adult. She went and talked to her trusted adult, who said, "You can do this. Take this AP course." So, she signed up for AP Language and Composition last year, or this year, as a junior. She also signed up for the AP Summer Prep Course because she felt like she could benefit from that. She stated that through the activities in the summer course, she started to gain confidence and was less anxious going into the school year. In her words, she stated that "The class forced me out of my comfort zone." Through multiple presentations, she gained the confidence to present in front of others. She also signed up for AP Lab going into the school year. This helped her form relationships with her peers and the study lab TA. She said they became a close-knit group of students, so when times got tough, they were leaning on each other. She said occasionally, the conversation would come up where a student wanted to drop the AP course, and she said they talked to each other and discouraged each other from doing so, and no one in their cohort dropped because of this. And she felt like it was because of that continuity that they had in that group of students and the peer-mentor relationships they had. Next year, she's going to be taking two additional AP courses as a senior, and she said that because of her experience in AP, she feels a lot more prepared as she's starting that college search process going into her senior year.
District 211 does not only look at AP as preparation for college-level coursework, we also look at dual-credit courses, and we have been working with the EOS representatives to share with them the impact and the importance of both AP and dual-credit coursework as students prepare for college-level and post-secondary experiences. The graph on the screen, what we did was we took a look at the way EOS created their gap charts for AP and created identical gap chart, but specifically for dual-credit. So, what you see is, on the far left, that first blue bar creates the benchmark, of which we say, "Okay, this is the benchmark of which all demographic groups need to hit in order for that enrollment gap to be nonexistent." So, if you look across, you'll see that red line following all the way through, and it's only in the last two sections where you see two different colors in the bar. And the lighter color shading is telling us, "Okay, we need to find a few more students." So, in this case scenario, that's a total of eight students to completely close that enrollment gap. enrollment gap. But I want to specifically draw your attention to the green bars, because there's two significance to this. One of which, when you look at this, that both bars are above that red line, which means for our Hispanic student population, there's a higher percentage of students enrolling in dual-credit coursework than any of our other demographic groups. They are taking advantage of these opportunities to earn their early college credit. This next graph, to me, really shows the growth over the last three years. What we look at here is, we looked at AP, and just recently, we looked at dual-credit. So now we're looking at the enrollment of both dual-credit or AP by juniors and seniors. The left-hand graph is from the school year 2015-16. The right-hand graph is from this school year, the enrollment by juniors and seniors in AP or dual-credit courses. I'd like to draw your attention again to that blue bar farthest on that left. This is where we started, where our benchmark was created. And of the benchmark group, 57% of the students were enrolled in an AP or dual-credit class. And we needed to close that gap, that enrollment gap, and create more opportunities for more of our students. If you look in just three years, as you follow that red line over to the right-hand graph, every single demographic group has at least 57% of their group enrolled in an Advanced Placement or Dual-Credit Class junior or senior year. And not only that, what has happened out of all of these discussions is that our benchmark went from 57% up to 83%. The other thing, again, I'd like to point your attention to the green bars. In 2015-16, 255 low-income Hispanic students were enrolled in dual-credit or AP classes. That was in 2015-16. In 2017-18, this year, 619 low-income Hispanic students are enrolled in AP Advanced Placement Now, we knew as we were making this change, and we had heard from EOS that we're going to have this big push, we're going to have this enrollment, and students are going to get nervous. And like what Mr. Harland said, they're going to feel like, "I don't belong. I might want to drop out." So what all the school is engaged in is, what can we do to make sure we stop students from dropping out of these experiences? And they created a series of conversations. It helped the students advocate for themselves, identify what they needed academically, and communicate with several adults. It wasn't just about talking to their counselor and saying, or their parents saying, "This isn't for me." It was their parent, it was their counselor, it was the department chair, it was the principal in cases, it was the teacher. And through each one of those conversations, a system of support was built individually for the student. But it also helped the leadership form a system of support for all students, putting in different support systems and interventions, where you see the AP Lab and other opportunities we've had for our students, the summer school opportunities. But it was really those conversations with those trusted advisors, giving the students the encouragement that they needed to know that they could stay in the course and keep on their trajectory.
Facilitating instruction on how to have the AP conversation. The pilot program of AP Community began with modeling student advocacy. Nora, an incoming freshman, attended our AP Community kickoff and sent a letter to her AP teachers introducing herself by writing. "I really want a challenge in school. I want to be able to look back on my high school career and think about how hard and challenging it was. I guess my biggest fear is that I may not do well in my AP classes. I really have no idea what to expect going into high school. People have told me that this AP class is really hard. And I guess that really doesn't help, but I'm excited to face whatever challenge comes my way. However, when faced with failure, I tend to give up." Seeking to provide comprehensive support for Advanced Placement students like Nora, the Fremd High School AP Community Initiative seeks to connect learners of varying levels of readiness and experience. Led by the AP Community Executive Board of six identified AP student leaders, over 300 students and parents connect through Schoology Resources to accelerated learning strategies, positive messaging for navigating the faculty and curriculum of Advanced Placement work, critical information for short-term and long-term planning, and defining asset-based student traits needed for success in accelerated learning environments. AP Community holds meetings every Friday morning where approximately 50 students meet to share their emerging AP story and identity with other students fostering a commitment to peer mentorship, out-of-school experiences, guest speakers, social-emotional learning, and enhancing AP student leadership traits that increase effective communication to students and teachers about equity and access in our classrooms. Supporting cross-curricular programming and the true meaning of extracurricular offerings, AP Community seeks to further an inclusive network of students that engage in understanding their student attributes beyond high test scores and high achievement. Member Devon reflected on her pride in being a member of AP Community by stating that "This club allows our peers taking AP classes to come together and create a helpful environment that provides tips and advice to succeeding on their AP journey. I am able to expand my accumulated knowledge beyond the formal instruction of classwork." Constructing an environment that sees AP as a journey rather than a singular disconnected experience shifts our AP culture toward an understanding of the value of trait-based identification for success in the accelerated classrooms of Fremd High School.
The work we are engaged in is changing the trajectory of students' lives. This is not only academically. We looked at the behavior trends for both discipline referrals and days of suspension over the last seven years. As you can see on the graphs on the screen, there has been a steady decline over those years, with significant reductions in both areas. Why is this? Because students are seeing themselves differently. And our teachers have noted several cases where they have seen the way a student comes into the classroom and how they approach their learning different. And specifically with the EOS partnership and the trusted adult training that we have been having the last two years. I want to share with you about a specific student at Fremd High School, Dominic. Dominic, as a freshman and sophomore, was struggling to make good choices. He was in and out of the discipline office, truants, tardies, getting discipline referrals not only for making his own poor choices, but sometimes just following along with peers. He didn't have his own identity. And this year, Dominic is a junior. And part of the EOS outreach identifies students that looks at their potential just based on how they're doing in their classes. It's not looked at discipline referrals. So when the teams look at the list, it's purely based on, "How did you do on that PSAT, nine, 10, or how are you doing with your GPA?" And he had a conversation with his US History teacher, who was his trusted adult, who encouraged him to take an AP class next year. And after much discussion and thought, he said, "I'm going to do this. I'm going to sign up for AP. I'm going to take AP Seminar." And it was because of these interactions, then all of a sudden, something happened. Dominic became energized about this opportunity. He was clearly proud of the success of being asked and really started to change who he was in and outside of the classroom, which whether he realizes it or not yet, he's developed into a leader this year for his peers. He has not been referred to the discipline office once since making that decision to enroll in an AP class for next year. He has exemplified how valuable that concept is of having that trusted adult for a first-time AP student and that person who believes in them. And he did say to his administrator, "He fully trusts the teacher." His US History teacher happens to also be the AP Seminar teacher for next year. And he said, "I trust and I believe that she is going to make sure that I'm going to excel next year." In addition to increasing enrollment in AP and dual-credit across all demographic groups, and in addition to seeing our behavior trend lines go down, we also, this year, for the third time in College Board's eight years, received the AP District Honor Roll. District 211 was one of 23 school districts given this recognition. And the way that they determine this is they look at a three-year period, 2015 to 2017, very much overlaps with the work that we've been doing. And they apply three specific benchmarks. One is, you have to have increased your AP participation by 4%. It's obvious by what we've shown, we hit that mark. In addition, the number of underrepresented students taking the AP exams must increase, and they must maintain the percentage of earning three, fours, or fives, which we did attain as well. And finally, our percentage of overall performance levels, earning a three, must maintain or be higher over that three-year period. Again, we hit the mark. What we've seen is our students have risen to the level of rigor and excellence. But I don't want you to just hear from us. We have an opportunity to hear from three Hoffman Estates students.
Omar Arroyo, and I'm a sophomore.
My name is Israel. I'm a junior at Hoffman Estates High School.
My name is Saomi. I'm a senior, and I'm in AP Computer Science, Literature and Composition, Physics C, German, and Calc AB.
To me, being enrolled in an AP class means that I'm challenging myself every day. And not only challenging myself, but I'm setting expectations for myself. And knowing that I can sometimes, you know, overcome those expectations and do better, it means that, you know, it means a lot to me.
The whole atmosphere is different from the people taking the classes, I feel, are much more focused and encourage me better than being in regular classes. And also, the teachers are more encouraging. They've always helped me more, and I've been able to have a deeper relationship with them.
It means that I'm willing to challenge myself and push myself to accomplish things that otherwise I might not be able to do in regular classes.
It's definitely made me realize what's important and what's not. And not only that, but I started to manage my time better, and I started to take more responsibility for my actions. And it's also made me realize that, you know, if I continue to challenge myself and do better in these classes, then I can definitely save money for college, and I can definitely do better in the future.
That just because something appears challenging or very difficult, it's not impossible to overcome, and I can do basically anything if I apply myself to it.
Besides being in five AP classes, I'm also in volunteering, and I'm in other things and my extracurriculars, so I have to be able to manage everything. It's really helped me with that.
It is difficult, but more so than just the sheer difficulty of the coursework, is there is a lot of coursework which requires you to develop skills, really life skills, such as managing your time or being well-organized. And that really will help me in the future when I'm out of high school, out of college, and I can do better in my jobs and such.
Not only are AP classes very diverse, but they also show you that, you know, you're one out of several kids that are challenging themselves to be a better person and to be a better you.
We would like to thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much for the lovely presentation. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I had a question. Since we're comparing the implementation, why did we go back to 2011 for discipline when the implementation wasn't until 2016? I mean, the students disciplined in 2011 would have graduated before we even started the AP initiative. So if I'm looking at just those three years forward from the implementation, I see kind of a flat-line trend versus a decrease. Can you speak to that?
Sure. In a one purely logical format, your analysis probably makes sense. But what's happened in our schools is beyond logic. And what's happened in our schools is that affectively, we have turned a major corner to recognize the wholeness of students. And our entire approach within our intervention offices, no longer being discipline offices, within our academic offices, no longer being achievement-based on a score office, but being based on the whole-person office. So the complete entirety of our schools has been changing. And it is wrapped up in one and another. So our efforts to make kids whole in all regards is why we included the trend data for all those years.
Okay, so then that discipline trend isn't directly tied to AP, which is what the presentation was about?
All of the culture that happens in our schools are connected with each other. And so we think that it is our overall approach within our schools and the cultures that we're creating that have helped change mindset and approach and willingness among everyone in our community, our students and our faculty on both sides.
Any other questions or comments?
The, I mean, obviously, the statistics and the graphs and the increased percentages that you presented are really impressive. You know, the personal stories of the students are, you know, sort of a nice capstone of that as well. I was really glad to hear at the end, though, that the performance in the class, because I know when we first started to talk about this, I wondered what would happen to the overall performance. So it's nice to hear that, you know, that the students did perform. So congratulations on that.
Thank you.
I think one thing I'm noticing is regardless of the trend, it's the opportunity. And the opportunity that this is providing our students is much more than they've ever had. Quite frankly, I'm jealous for my children, who did not have some of these opportunities when they were in 211, but envious for those who are. So thank you very much.
Thanks to the troopers who came out to support your mob, too.
This will bring us to our consent agenda. The suggested motion is that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hintra?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. We have our Freedom of Information Acts for your information and any questions. This will bring us to our new business. We have the resolution calling a public hearing for inter-fund transfers for capital improvement projects. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education directs publication of a notice of public hearing to take place at its June 14, 2018, meeting to consider the permanent inter-fund transfer of 5.7 million from the Educational Fund to its Operations and Maintenance Fund, and 1.5 million from the Transportation Fund to its Operations and Maintenance Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Hintra?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye. We have our Equal Opportunity Schools Implementation Suggested Motion that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to engage in a three-year partnership with Equal Opportunity Schools at a cost not to exceed $180,000.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a couple of questions. Are there any grants involved in helping to pay for this?
We have not utilized any grants to pay for it.
Can we, or? I know, I caught you off guard. I'm sorry, I didn't ask that question earlier. I just wonder if there's grants to help with it. I'm not aware of any that are available specifically for this.
We do utilize Title I funds in our school to support students. So I guess indirectly, there would be supports for students, but not directly to offset the costs of the EOS services, per se.
And I know we've had it for the two years now? And I'm just wondering, we're going out three more years with them. Will there be a point where we separate from them? Or is this something that's?
Yeah, we are certainly hopeful to do that. There is a changeover, as I described, where we do see a different process by which students are being selected. And once I think we have our footing under us and the surety of the surveys and the outgrowth of what supports are most helpful for students, this year, the survey at the end of the year is directed to, with our first year of kids, "How is it then that we best supported you? Or what would have been helpful that we did not provide?" So we are hopeful to see that, those results from this year. We agree that our goal is to become independent of them. The company is well aware of that. I've had direct conversations with them about how can we work on that. I've had direct conversations with them about how can we work in that. Danielle's been working extremely closely with them about that as well, as has Lisa, you know, in that effort.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Why a three-year contract when we've done two single-year contracts? Why not another one-year contract to try to remove ourselves from them and do more of this internally? Because I know last year, when we were looking at another year, the discussion was, okay, well, once we have this year of support, we should be able to implement some of these things that were introduced by EOS, and now we're looking at a long-term, you know, partnership with them. I'm not sure why we need that and what they're offering beyond what we can do in-house.
Sure, sure. So we think the results are compelling. We think the...
No, I agree. Yeah, the results are great.
Yeah, we think the real impact for kids is compelling, and our partnership with them, we believe, has been beneficial to us. We are hopeful to, you know, again, become independent, but our recommendation at this point is to maintain a partnership with them for three years, to learn from the other communities who continue to be partners, and us also then to contribute to their growth and partnership of the others who would be coming in as a combined entity.
I have a question. How does this three-year expense compare to the one-year expenses that we've previously incurred?
It's substantially lower. We had been, I think the first year we were in for over 125,000. This year, we were, I want to say it was 95. So I did work with them and met with them at a conference a couple of different times to say, "We need to see a lower number," and, you know, that was our effort to maintain the partnership, but then also to reduce the number. And the three-year partnership did substantially reduce it compared to our previous year's expenditures for it.
Thank you. And the level of service is the same?
It is not the same. We have been working away from any of the consultant services, and I wouldn't say any of them, but it's drastically reduced. It is now largely centered around surveys, the two surveys on both the incoming end and the outgoing end for both sides of that, if you will.
Anything additional? May I roll call, please? Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs., Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
We have our proposed policy revision for graduation requirements. This is our first read. If there is any questions or comments. In addition, we also have our review of the prevention of and responses of student bullying policy. Any questions or comments? This will bring us to our school bus propane gas agreement. Suggested motion that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent or designee to enter into an agreement with AmeriGas Propane LP for the period of May 2018 through July 2021 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. In the motion specifically, it says, well, the description for the contract is regarding the, it looks like the, for lack of a better term, the markup, associated to the price. Is that typical versus a price or a range?
So we do not know what would happen to the price in the future outgoing years. So we did want to just provide the anchor to which that would be indexed or connected in full disclosure, if you will.
So regardless of the price, this is the markup, so to speak, or the marginal cost, as it's called in this contract?
It's the agreement that we would be making and...
Yeah, this is the, the margin is a fixed margin for the three-year contract period.
Regardless of the actual price, so to speak?
Yes, the area index then is the part that could potentially fluctuate. We do have the ability to lock in the area index rate as well, so we will be monitoring that. There are certain points of the year where that price is lower, so we would be looking to consider that once we get to that point.
Thank you.
Any others?
This is more of an operational question. If we find that the propane expenses are exceeding our diesel expenses, is there any penalty if we don't operate our propane buses in the first year as far as that grant incentive goes?
For the grant incentive, we have to have the buses in operation. We have been tracking the propane fuel rates for looking historically at those versus those of diesel, and it has been consistently more economical for us to operate the propane buses. In addition to the fuel are also the operational components of it, which are cheaper from a maintenance standpoint, electricity standpoint, those components as well.
As a follow-up to that, do all 15 buses have to be operational? Question being, what if we have a couple that aren't working?
Sure, if they're out for repairs, that, the requirement is that they have to be in use for the school year. So if they are out, you know, if they are not being run for a summer, or if they are out being maintained in some way, that is, that is not, there's no hinge point there. What I would say is that almost every single one of our buses are in operation on any given day, so we would expect that they would be in full utilization. I have a question about the location of the buses. So if I understand correctly, the goal would be to eventually move the buses kind of behind the building instead of where we currently have them. Any concerns with the neighbors and the location of the tanks, and any noise or sounds that they would be making early in the morning?
I guess my first experience is if you were standing next to a diesel bus or a propane bus, you'd rather be next to a propane bus. So that is one major difference, you know, that we think is going to be helpful, and actually is what affords us the opportunity to move the parking lot solutions that we need also, to move some of the buses behind the building at Hoffman Estates High School in particular. As, you know, many on the board probably know, that is the parking lot where we have tiered our approach to the solution. If we were to move the diesel buses into the back, it creates problems with our air quality. We do not anticipate any known hindrances with the neighbors, and we think that the buses themselves will be much better to operate. They do not require the warm-up, long period of warm-up to prevent the gelling in the winter, so there's a, you know, another component on that that we think is a, just a more user-friendly quality about the buses.
And just as kind of a good neighbor type of a thing, will we let some of those people that live behind us know that the buses are going to be there, that there are going to be propane, so they don't, you know, get into panic and think the worst? Certainly, we will, you know, we try and always reach out if we think that there is going to be any sort of impact to let our neighbors know that. We do plan to do some testing during off times to where we can understand they are a much quieter bus. There is not the, there are essentially no emissions, so you don't have the odors that would have been potentially concerning to people in the past when the buses were on that side of the building. Thank you.
May I roll call, please? Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Any potential topics for future discussion? This will bring us to our committee reports. Mrs. Klimkowitz, anything to report from NSSEO? I know with every two weeks, sometimes I don't know when everyone's meetings are.
The only thing I have is last night was the graduation at Kirk, and there were 22 students that were graduating and moving on to the transitional part of their education. So it was a very nice ceremony.
Thank you. Mr. Dombrowski, anything with Ed Red?
No meeting since our last meeting.
I had one Ed Red update, if I may. The reference to dual credit earlier this evening, there is a Senate Bill 3190 is getting a lot of good momentum right now. It is specific to expanding dual credit opportunities across the state, and we are very hopeful that this will pass. It is something that would expand dual credit opportunities throughout the state, but then also here locally, potentially by broadening the qualifications and some of the hindrances that happen between the higher education system and the high school system. So it is a good progress for us, and I just wanted to mention that to you in case we happen to see reference to that, that we are very pleased about that movement.
Partners for our community, that's me. We had our last meeting for the school year, and we spent most of our time talking about services within Hoffman's community for that organization, and I did take the opportunity to share about our free breakfast and lunch program at our two schools, and they were, first time they heard about that. So that's kind of, kind of nice, because I feel like it's out there. And just to remind everybody, there's a golf outing in August if anyone wants to partake. And this will bring us to our announcements. Tomorrow's the last day of the school year. Thank you, everyone, for being out and about and really being present in the buildings. I know it makes a difference to students and staff. This will bring us to entering closed session. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education enter closed session to discuss minutes meeting lawfully closed under the Open Meeting Act. Appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, and deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Suggested motion that the Board of Education return to open session?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Any meeting recap, conversation? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.